Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting. July 5th, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to welcome Sierra Graves.
Hi.
This is our new student representative. Thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Moving on to presentations and discussions of issues to the committee, our annual athletics report, can you come up, Chris, and give us that?
Welcome to join us right here. Don't pull off the edge, Chris.
Yeah, I was gonna say that show looks like it's on. Was that on purpose?
Yes, it was.
You don't have one?
I don't have it. Oh, here, this is it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chris.
Hello.
Thank you for having me and thank you, you had mentioned, but I actually put this off a couple of weeks and that was a big help to me, so I thank you for doing that. I'm just gonna run through some of the information that I put in your packet, trying to give you an idea both of some of our participation numbers and some of the things that were accomplished by some of our teams this season and also some of the things that we think are good and exciting news with our athletic programs. Participation numbers again continue to rise. We had 347 student athletes from grades nine through 12 participate last season, that is, in one sport during one season, one or more seasons of play. A lot of our student athletes are two-sport athletes, so the actual participation numbers by season are higher and I gave you a breakdown in the sheet just to give you an idea of what we have season by season and school grade level by grade level. I also included in that the number of eighth graders that were participating with each different season. We had 149 CPS students participate in our program for the year and again, those numbers are up from what we've seen in the past and I think part of that was the program with the eighth graders being able to play at the high school level. We had sixth grade involvement at the CPS level, which we feel was a good thing. As far as our game schedules and all go, just to give you an idea of the volume of what we are dealing with, we had a total of 494 games between the three different levels of play, 246 home contests that we hosted and 248 travels that we managed to get teams off island and back safely. Again, I gave you a breakdown of each level just to give you an idea of what type of gameplay we have at each of the different levels. And again, I won't go through all that information, I'm sure you've been able to look that over on your own. Some of the successes from an athletic standpoint, we had 13 of our 15 teams qualify for state tournament play this year. For schools our size, that's a great accomplishment and something that we're very proud of. We had two teams that made it to the sectional finals, both our boys soccer team and our boys lacrosse team both made it to the south sectional finals of their sports. I listed the sports that did qualify for tournament play. We also had eight of our 15 teams that ended up winning league championships this year and again, I listed those schools just so you have them on record. I gave you a spreadsheet that really I've given to you each year, it's just a little more detailed breakdown, kind of season by season, team by team. As to the number of participants, also some academic information there for each team from a standpoint of number of high honor students, honor roll students, grade point average, et cetera, and then some of the accomplishments for each of the individual teams, again, just so you have that for your files and records. A number of things that I just want to touch base on, some programs that we put in play last year, some programs that we hope to put in play this year. Last year, we opened up participation to, at the high school level for junior varsity level play to eighth graders. We did that in the hopes of helping with our numbers with some of the high school programs, also trying to take off some of the pressure that we have with the middle school programs, also to try and include our sixth graders at the middle school level programs. For the most part, we felt that everything was very, very successful. It was a transition year, with anything, there's gonna be a little bit of growing pains, but the truth of the matter is, the majority of the feedback that I got was all of a positive nature. I know the kids that participated in the high school programs and the JV level programs all found it to be a good experience and a rewarding experience for them, they felt that they benefited from the increased level of competition that they were playing at, so it was a positive from their standpoint. Basically, the kids that did try out and did play with the junior varsity level teams all saw significant playing time with those teams. And I think the inclusion of the sixth graders at the middle school level kinda speaks for itself. We always wanna have as many of our students participating in after-school activities as possible, this gave them an opportunity to get involved with our athletic programs. Last year, we went to, we opened up a junior varsity level volleyball program, girls volleyball program in the fall, which really worked out quite well. We had a total of 19 student athletes that participated in that program, grades eight through 12 for the first season. They played in 12 matches against different schools from the Cape area, got better as the seasons went along and actually towards the end of the season, we ended up with those schools, playing both varsity and JV games against some of the schools that are in our league in the Cape. Not winning a ton of games, but competitive with the programs that they were playing against, so the program definitely moved in a positive direction. We've got 30 sign-ups for this fall, so the numbers are increasing. There are enough numbers there to fill both of ours to get into JV level programs, so that's the direction we're heading for this fall. I wanna mention and give kudos and congratulations to both Andrew Vesely, who was the head coach of this program, and Andrew came with a good background in volleyball and did a nice job with the program, and then Anthony Supa, who's one of our PE teachers here, was his JV, or assistant coach, and he also, they did a great job with this program. The girls that participated last year are coming back, which is a good sign. The increased numbers coming in this year are a good sign and it's also nice to say that with adding this new program, one of the things we always try to watch and monitor is to make sure that we're not pulling off of any existing programs and we only had one student athlete last year that was a participant on another fall program that participated in the volley program, so those are all new bodies that are now involved in our athletic program, which again, is a real positive thing. For this year, we're bringing cross-country onboard as a club-level sport. This has been run as a club team at the middle school level, Charlene Rudd, along with Gary Allen, have been running this program. Sidney Barzani has been very involved in this. Charlene and Sidney came to me really wanting to push this to the high school level, because those kids that have been participating at the middle school level now are moving on to ninth grade, so we put it out there to see what kind of interest level we would get. We've got 18 nine through 12 students who have signed up for this program, so we're gonna move forward with it. As a club-level sport, it will be funded primarily from outside of the school system. We are gonna have the student athletes in this program go through our registration process and go through the participation fee to help fund the sum of the things that we'll need for this program, but Sidney and Charlene are working on outside funding to cover everything else. Gary Allen and Phil Allen are gonna be the two coaches. Gary Allen has 25 years running experiences, he was the coach with the club team at the middle school and has done a great job, he knows all these kids, so he will kind of head the program and then Phil, who is certified in track and field and is also a runner here on the island, is gonna be his assistant. Talk a little bit about the Cape and Islands League. Cape and Islands League is our primary league for athletics. We are affiliated with a number of different leagues just due to sport involvement, but Cape and Islands League has really become our major league as far as most of our sports goes. The Cape and Islands League was an old league that was dissolved a number of years ago. We worked hard to rebuild and reform that league back in 2010. We've been working hard trying to expand this league by adding more schools. We've got, Montmore Regional High School has already been accepted, they'll be coming onboard this fall as a member of the league, that will push the league numbers now to nine schools that are in the Cape and Islands League. We voted at the principals, both the principal and AD levels, it was unanimously voted to bring in the largest schools in the Cape, starting in the fall of 2017. That would be Barnstable, DY, Falmouth, Nauset, and Sandwich. And the hopes with expanding the league is just to offer more opportunities, a little bit better competition for some of our programs that are of a little higher competitive level and to try and minimize travel for all the schools in the Cape and Islands area. Since we've moved back to the reform of the Cape and Islands League, it's been much easier for us from a standpoint of travel for our teams. It's certainly much easier to travel to one of the Sturgis's or Falmouth Academy or Cape Cod Academy than it is to go over the bridge and start traveling in that direction, so that's had an impact both from a standpoint of budget and also from a standpoint of lost time in the classroom, just we don't have to go with quite the same early dismissals that we have. Last but not least on the list, and you may or may not have seen or noticed this, this last year, we did a little bit of remodeling work in our high school gym, we redid the whole banner system in there and it's really pretty special, we think it really showcases both our school and our athletic programs nicely. It involved putting up a good hanging system so that now when we put banners up there, they're hung in a clean fashion. We had all the old banners which had been up there for quite some time, we had them cleaned and then rehung them in the gym and then put up a new set of banners that basically represents each and every one of our teams so that all of our athletic programs at the varsity level are recognized from a standpoint of accomplishment by noting the years that they either qualified for state tournament play or won league championships, so it's nice to have that representation for each and every one of the sports. That's pretty much it from my perspective and I'd open up to any questions that you have.
Tim?
The expanded Cape and Islands with those big mainland schools, are we gonna be playing them in football?
We would not be playing them in football, right now, that setup with the Cape and Islands League is, does not include football and does not include ice hockey. Our hope is that as the league expands, that it will include those two sports. What we're looking at with the league expansion is divisional play, so that you would have the larger schools in what would be Division One, smaller schools in what would be Division Two, and when I, large and small may not be the right term, because what we're trying to do is we're trying to match schools up according to parity. And just as an example, our boys soccer program, which is one of the better programs in the state, they get hurt primarily because the competition that they're competing against now is not as strong as they would like it to be. They would opt to go into the Division One, they would opt to compete with Barnstable, Dennis Jarman, Sandwich, Nauset, so on and so forth, and that would benefit that program by doing that. We feel we have some other programs that may wanna do the same, I know our boys lacrosse program has mentioned the same and we're considering it in a couple of other sports as well. When all this comes into play, you may see two divisional alignments in some sports, you might even see three divisional alignments in some sports. We're also hoping that, we think that, we know that Mashpee, and we've heard from their principal on this, that once this all comes into play, Mashpee's gonna wanna come onboard as well, so that will add a 15th school to the Cape and Islands League. You've still got a couple of other schools such as Upper Cape Tech and Bourne that are in the same area that may be taking a look as well, so it just offers an awful lot of possibilities from a standpoint of being able to formulate a basically what would be a super-league that has multiple schools in it where you can have different divisional alignments and you can use those divisional alignments to achieve parity of play for pretty much every program or school that's in the league. As you go into divisional alignments, it also sets up from a standpoint of each division becomes a league champion, so as far as state tournament play goes, if you had three divisions within a sport, you would have six schools that would be automatic qualifiers for state tournament play, so it opens the door for more schools to get involved in state-level play, which would be a positive for all those schools.
On the cross-country, transportation costs, are they gonna be borne by the school or out of a separate fundraising account?
That would all be borne out of a separate fundraising account. We're going to use what we collect in user fees to offset what we can in travel expenses. They're set up to fund whatever they need as a balance of that. For the first year, we will probably compete in maybe six or seven meets. We hope to be able to host some meets here, but that's something that we're working on now. We wanna be able to get these kids involved, a lot of the schools in the existing Cape and Islands League have cross-country and the fact that there's a, there's a group out there that really wants to get involved in this and again, it's the same thing as volleyball. We're not pulling on athletes that are participating in other sports now. The group of 18 that we currently have sign up are all new athletes to our athletic program.
When would they be considered becoming a varsity sport?
We'd really kinda like to see them go through two years at this level and then see where we go. Now, we would take a good hard look at it at the end of next year, but also from a standpoint of getting them onboard with the budget, we need a couple of years in order to get the funding straight in order to make that happen. We've talked to them about from a standpoint of the funding that they're doing privately outside and this is similar to what the ice hockey program did, is to create a little bit of a surplus so that if they do want to go varsity earlier, they would still need to provide the funding for us to be able to do what we need to do.
But, I mean, the costs associated with cross-country are minuscule compared to probably everything except soccer.
You're 100% correct on that. I mean, basically, there's no equipment involved that would involve uniforms and coaching and travel expenses is really the bottom line with that. One of the things that we're working on now and looking into is just exactly what we're gonna use for a course. Cross-country usually runs typically, it's a 5K, so it's anywhere between, typically between three and five miles. Where they have been running as a middle school group, they've been using the middle school park or Mill Hill Park area quite a bit. So we're looking at that and we're also looking at the Lambang property that is out off of Old South Road, there's trails through there.
What about one of the golf courses?
That's a possibility, just with it being a fall sport, that could be a busy time and that might be, that might become more of a shooting gallery for golfers then. The other areas that we're possibly looking at is the possibility of like the Tuppencey property or the Sanford property, those are both controlled by the Conservation Foundation, so we feel like there could be an avenue there where we could possibly use those as well. We certainly have plenty of avenues here where we feel we could set up a great course.
I wanted to say thank you for the spreadsheets, that made it very easy to see the numbers and it was very enlightening. Cross-country, what about track and field, this plain old running track, has that ever come up?
Track and field has come up a number of times and the truth of the matter is, we really just aren't equipped to do it right now because, A, we don't have a track, we have a, we have a dirt.
We're working on that, right?
We have a dirt road that goes around the football field right now, at some point.
I'm gonna jump in and rescue Chris or maybe do just the opposite. We had the plan to have an athletic complex and a track, a six-lane track around the football field and that plan still exists, but when we shifted to seats in the classroom as a greater priority, we put that plan, you know, on the back burner. But we still have it, love to be able to do it and I think actually that we can accomplish it once, once the building project is complete, we could probably do it through annual capital and donations rather than have to do a bond for it, so.
So it's in the future?
Yeah, it's a nice plan and it puts a nice track around the football field, moves the football field. I can bring that plan back to show you. There are many people out in the community who remind me of that constantly, so.
It was beautiful.
Now, I will say that track and field will be a little different than volleyball and cross-country.
That's exactly what.
Because it will have an impact on your other sports.
Right.
There, you know, and that's something in a small school that we will have to weigh and see what happens to baseball and softball and, you know.
Track is basically, track is a spring sport in the state of Massachusetts and I would make, I would've made the same point that Mike just did from a standpoint, we try to watch anytime we add a sport, just exactly what kind of impact it's going to have on other sports, because we really don't want to put something in place that is going to kill one or two of our other sports programs, so we try to be, we try to be careful with that. But again, we would do the exact same thing if we, you know, had the facilities and certainly, when you look at the plan and you look at the expansion of putting a nice running track in, the running track means more than to this island than just the school, the running track would be used community-wise, so putting a running track in does not necessarily dictate that you have to have a track team, but it certainly would open the door to the possibilities of it.
My understanding is that we once had a track.
No, we did about 30 years ago was the last time I remember it. As a matter of fact, Dr. Pearl holds the female quarter-mile record.
Ah. Well, no. We would have a very good track team, I have no doubt.
You're good to say that was 30 years ago, because I was actually on that track team and it might've been a little longer. Believe it or not, that track team was coached by Vito Capizzo.
And the record was?
Yes.
Interesting. I have a question for you, is the cross-country team open to middle schoolers since it's closed?
The cross-country team is going to be open to grade eight through 12.
Okay.
Because we're going to steer that kind of in the way of a high school program. I think that they're going to keep open the middle school group that they've had as far as running goes. That's what we wanna do, is we wanna establish kind of a feeder program for that, so if we can get the kids running with that middle school program, then it will naturally feed right into high school. And I know this all started with Gary and his wife Doreen did a summer triathlon for that age group, that middle school age group, which the kids got very involved in, they loved it and then off of that came the running club that you've seen that has been run at the middle school level for the past two years.
Well, and I know Brandpoint Runners Every Tuesday has a huge showing of our middle school students now, so that's great. Another question, could you give me an idea of the tryout process for your eighth graders to join JV?
Typically, the tryout process is, and what we do is this, if we, if there are eighth graders that are interested in trying out at that level, we have them join the team. Our high school sports typically start ahead, at least a week ahead of our middle school sports, so it gives us an envelope where they can try it and we can see if it's a good fit or not. We try to have discussions with the kids, with the parents and the coaches, just to make sure that we're making the right decision from a standpoint of where the student will fit and benefit the most. In the end, we'll make our recommendations to a student and the parents, it's really up to the parents where they may want to see their kid play. The majority of the kids that have played at the JV level chose that level because they felt that they wanted a little bit more rigorous schedule and a little bit more of a challenge of play and, you know, typically, they are the better athletes in the sport of play. And I think that that's pretty much been the norm right straight across the board.
That's good. I worry about those students who maybe do that just to be with their peers that they've been playing with or be with their friends or the glory of playing on a high school team but might not be there physically or mentally.
I don't think that's the case and I think the way that we have run everything, I mean, just try to be open and honest with them.
That's good.
And we'll be open and honest from a standpoint of, you know, where they fall and where their abilities are.
That's good.
I know with our basketball program, our JV team, which had a very, very successful year, the four of the starters on that JV team were the eighth graders, they were just, they were the better players on the team.
That's impressive.
And I will say this, even with those eighth graders on that team, there were 20 kids on that JV boys basketball team that were there at practice every single day and Mike Day did a great job of keeping those kids busy and active and happy and they just, they all kept showing up.
That's great.
Now, one of the eighth graders that was on that team did not see a whole lot of playing time, we talked to him about it, we gave him the option, you could play at the middle school level if you wanted to. He chose and he preferred to stay with that team, he felt that he would benefit more from, just from the practicing rigors with that team than he would at the middle school level, so that was, that was his choice.
That's good.
I think one, if I may, one of the other points, Chris, that you've made to me is that many of the Cape schools are eight through 12 and so our middle schoolers often are playing against middle schools on the Cape that don't have eighth graders.
100% correct.
I don't know how many teams are like that.
Well, they just, when you look at the, a lot of the high schools in the Cape area are all going to the eight through 12 model, that's what you've got at Barnstable High School, that's what you've got now at DY High School, that's what you've got at Sandwich High School. Nauset is one that has stayed with the nine through 12 model, Mashpee is an eight through 12 high school. So a lot of the schools that we compete against from a standpoint of the JV teams, we're seeing eighth graders on their JV teams from a standpoint of their middle school teams, we were in the boat of having our seventh and eighth graders compete against their sixth and seventh graders and what we were seeing was a mismatch from a standpoint of the level of play that our kids were seeing. Now, our middle school, I'll use our middle school basketball program as an example, they struggled a little bit this year from a standpoint of the competition with some of the schools they played, but they benefited more from a standpoint of, that meant more kids got out on the court than normally would've because of those kids that moved up to the JV level, so more kids got court time, more kids got playing time and more kids benefited from playing, you know, good competition at that level. So it's not all about win-loss records, it's really about, you know, being able to get the kids out playing and playing at a competitive level.
Thank you. Pauline, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do, thank you. Going back to the cross-country team with their fundraising, is it possible for them to go through the boosters club so that they have a little bit of name recognition rather than just individual fundraising?
What they're doing right now, and this is similar to what the hockey program did, is they're going to set up a NHS cross-country club account and they're going to fundraise through that. They could do that through the booster club or they can do it through the private funding and then we would have to accept donations that would go in through the athletic revolver so we could use those funds for funding. Even if it went through the booster club, the booster club would do, could do two different things, they again could make donations to the athletic funds through the revolver to pay certain invoices or those invoices could go direct to the booster club for payment, so either way will work.
Okay. You've talked to us before about it, but I'd love to sort of just get a reminder, looking at your GPAs on the teams is impressive and I know that that's not always an easy thing to get every kid to qualify for sports. Can you just talk a little bit about the academic support that your athletes receive and what you've got in place for them?
We have, I mean, we have really pushed the idea that the academics come before athletics. When we talk about anything with our participants in our athletic program, we always talk about student-athlete and the student always comes first. We have seen continued not just success but improvement right across the board from a standpoint of all of our, all of our student-athletes. And if you look at the figures here for last year, what we do at each award ceremony, we give out certificates to any athlete that reaches honor roll status during their season of play, we give out plaques for any student-athlete that reaches high honor status to recognize them not only for their them not only for their participation in a sport, but for maintaining high standards academically while they're participating. So one hundred and forty-eight certificates for honor roll status and sixty-four plaques for high honors status throughout the course of the year. So over two hundred awards to student-athletes for achieving that kind of status. I gave you a breakdown by season so you could just kind of see where everything fell. And this is, we give an award each season for the team that has the highest overall GPA. And if you look at that, you're going to see girls, girls, and more girls. The girls do have a tendency to rank a little higher than the boys from an academic standpoint, but I would point out that the overall GPA for all of our student-athletes across the board, three point five-nine. That's pretty impressive when you consider the number of students in the school that are participating in athletics. And we have a lot of very, very good, accomplished student-athletes in this school.
Can you touch upon for some of the kids, though, that are having difficulties in their classes and in jeopardy of not having the ability or privilege to play? What do you put in place?
Well, what we put in place a couple of years ago, we have, it's called an academic probation plan. And the way it works is this, our eligibility standards for participation in athletics is that you have to be passing all of your classes. You can't be failing a single class. For student-athletes that are failing one class, I can make a recommendation to the school, to Dr. Bucky, to put them on a academic probation plan. The way the academic probation plan works is there's a contract that is signed by the student-athlete, the parent, myself, and Dr. Bucky. And then weekly, they get a progress report that they take to their teachers, and they get signatures on them each week. There's four columns as to exceptional, satisfactory, needs improvement, and unacceptable. And we ask the teachers to give us comments on those. What we're trying to do with this is for students that are struggling, we're trying to get them to make a connection with their teachers so that they're meeting with them on a regular basis, and they start to build a relationship where the academics, the grades get better. Those that have worked on this plan have shown great improvement. Anybody that's failing more than one class is academically ineligible. We do monitor and we do check with any of our athletes and our kids on a regular basis. We don't necessarily just abandon them if they're failing classes. We try to connect with them, work with them, get them to work with their teachers to get those academics up to where they should be. We have our coaches trying to do the exact same thing. Clearly, we want to see our students on the athletic fields, but we also want our students to understand that participation in athletics is a privilege, not a right, and you earn that privilege by doing the things that you're supposed to be doing in school first.
Great. Just last question, and I don't know if you've got the percentage handy, but I'd be curious to see what percentage of diversity we have in our student body who are athletes.
I do not have those percentages, and I couldn't tell you. You know, and it's every, I would tell you, it's interesting because it's different sport by sport. And I think that if you were to go and watch, go through the soccer, boys' soccer roster in particular, you would see the greatest diversity that you would see on any one of our sports teams. When you look at the, the other sports, not, not quite as much. And it is, it's in, you know, we have very interesting demographics here, and a lot of the students that are coming in don't necessarily come from a culture where athletics is part of that environment, and a lot of them do not necessarily get, get involved. And it's not that our doors are closed to anybody, it's really a matter of, anytime a new student comes into the school, they typically are brought down to my office, we meet with them, and we give them the spiel, it's just exactly everything that we offer, and we hope that they'll participate in any number of our programs.
Especially if they're over six feet and over two hundred pounds.
Yes.
Thank you.
Coach, I just want to add a little bit here. Again, I commend you for all of your hard work since you came on board as the athletic director a few years ago. I've seen a tremendous change and difference. I appreciate that. I just feel a little partial to the cheerleaders. They don't seem to have any awards or accomplishments, so what can we do to support that program?
Well, they do have, I mean, and that is a, that is a great question spoken, just like the mother of a cheerleader. Cheerleaders get kind of a raw deal, and I always talk to the cheerleaders, and the cheerleaders are an important part of our athletic program from a standpoint, I call them the, they're the spirit base of our athletic program. And they do not get recognized often enough. Unfortunately, they don't really compete, they don't have competition, so there's no league championships for them, there's no state tournament play. They do get recognized from a standpoint of their academic accomplishments, they do go through an award ceremony, just like all of our other sports programs do.
But why don't they compete? Because I know competitions are out there.
Well, the competitions are out there, and it's really something that the cheerleading program decided to pull back from a while ago. They didn't feel like they had a group of girls that was really locked in and committed to what it took to go through those competitions. So that was a choice with the coaching staff that they decided to pull back from. They are moving back towards that this year to get back into competitions from a standpoint of cheerleading competitions, and I think that's something that we want to see. I can tell you that from a personal standpoint, from the athletic director's standpoint, I make a point of, at every single award ceremony, of those girls, and even more so every time I see them down on the football field, to make sure that they know and they understand that I see just exactly the amount of time and energy that they put into it, and the fact that no matter what anybody else may say, they are athletes and they do work just as hard as all the rest of our athletes. We're going to work on the competitions to see if we can get something, something going on there.
And I'd like to see them get letterman jackets this year, hopefully, right?
Well, there's been, yeah, and I mean, the, the letterman jacket has been a topic of discussion for quite some time. The letterman jacket goes way back, and it used to be that the booster club gave letterman jackets to all the seniors. And then it was finally figured out that we're giving these kids their jackets about the time that they're walking out the door, they go to college, they don't ever really wear them. So the letterman jacket kind of went out the door for a while. Diane started the Joe Vayer Fund, which is a great thing for our football team and as far as their letterman jackets go. We're doing some research now, trying to find jackets of a style that would be more compatible with different athletes, because not everybody wants to wear those heavy leather-sleeved jackets. So we're working on that, and I know that Missy has a program going, we're going to try and get some letterman jackets for her girls. We've also, with all of our words, some, now, we are making sure that we are, anybody that letters in a varsity sport is getting that letter. And also, we have a PIN system, so for each year of participation in a sport, they get a PIN for participation in that sport. So some of our two and three sports athletes will have letters with numerous pins on them, which...
I, as a senior next year, would love to see some jacket of a kind to represent us. I mean, pretty cool.
We're working on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chris. Do you have any questions? Thank you for all your help and your information. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing the table.
All right. Comments from the public? Any comments tonight?
No comments.
Moving on to discussions and votes to be taken. May I have a vote to approve closing student activity accounts and transferring, transfer to Nantucket Education Trust?
Before we do that, can I just ask a question? So I noticed that two thousand and six and two thousand and ten...
Yes.
They've been, they were left open for a while, blah, blah, blah. Is there a criteria for closing it now?
We do have a criteria. Mike, can you share that?
Yep.
It's in our policy.
We have a policy under the J policies, and I can't come up with the letter off the top of my head, might be JJF, that speaks to any funds remaining as class accounts are, will be transferred to the Nantucket Education Trust. It specifies that.
So window?
The reason that it specifies that is because the net trust reserves these funds to be used on students, because the student, the funds were student-raised. The audits do not allow for activity accounts to hold money, and so we got that audit two years ago, and were firmly, you know, slapped on the, on the wrist for permitting that. So we've been working for the last two years to notify past presidents and treasurers that if they wanted those funds, this is how they go about. Several classes did come forward and set up separate accounts and were, were given their funds, and the others did not. So these represent, and that's why you don't, you see some years, some gaps in the years, because those were classes that, that did come forward. I think the only two classes after tonight's action will be the class of two thousand fifteen and the class of two thousand sixteen that haven't yet closed, because they still have invoices coming in that have to be paid. So there's about a two-year window, or at least a little over a year, that they have to close those accounts.
So I guess, this is just for the record, so people know, is, is there a window between non-activity and closeout? Or is it just you can't retain it for any length of time?
Moving forward, starting two years ago, we notify each senior class that they cannot, that it's use it or lose it. And usually, senior classes use the funds for, you know, prom, senior ball, things like that. And then they will often determine to give a class gift. Some of these classes did not give a class gift, and those funds needed to be closed out. The auditors said that we'll give you time to do this, but moving forward, and so for the class of two thousand fifteen and the class of two thousand sixteen, they had been told specifically that they had to either take those funds into their own accounts or, or use them. So now that they're being told that, they tend to use them.
So the concept of retaining funds for future reunions and things, if that is something the class officers would like to be charged with, they would be under their social security numbers and managed by them.
They have to open a separate account.
Not a school account, it can't be of the school.
Logan, do you want to add to that?
Two thousand and fourteen would have been on here, but the officers were more out of the country at different times, so they asked if they'd come in to the next school committee meeting, so they'll be on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, so number one, class of two thousand five.
Motion, approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need me to read the announce, the amounts?
Ten, two.
Okay, class of two thousand five, the amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Class of two thousand eight, eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Class of two thousand eleven, sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, seventy-one cents. Class of two thousand twelve, fourteen thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and thirteen cents. Class of two thousand thirteen, twelve thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and forty-six cents. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So vote to approve closing student activity accounts, class of two thousand six and class of two thousand ten.
Motion, approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote for approval for NHS field trip to Catalonia, Spain, April twelfth through twenty-third, two thousand seventeen.
Motion, approval?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve the CPS field trip.
And we are pulling that approval because the, they're not going to go on that particular field trip. They were talking about going, possibly having the eighth-grade Spanish students go to Guatemala or Costa Rica. The numbers, and I think the age of the children, put that in question, and if they want to pursue that, they can, they may do that privately, but not through the school. Quite frankly, and, and I had a good talk with Janet Emack, I'm not sure at that age that I could recommend that to you. I think it's a little young to be going that far. I think Guatemala in particular is not a particularly stable, not always a stable country. And then you add to it the Zika virus, which is keeping a lot of Olympic athletes from going south of the border. I, you know, I, I think this was not the right time to bring this forward, and I think Janet'd agree.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. May I have a vote for approval of amendment of policy FF, naming new facilities or spaces?
Motion, approval?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
And if I may, Madam Chairman, I'll just speak to that because I know it's of interest. We have received two letters of recommendation to, to have the gym at Nantucket Elementary School named after Sally Roberts. So the, I expect that the next policy meeting, we will act on that and bring that forward to you for school committee vote, possibly at the, the meeting in, the first meeting in August.
Thank you. All right, a gift donation in the amount of two thousand dollars from Nantucket Yacht Club to NCS for ESOL program.
Motion, approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A gift donation of four thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, fifty-one cents from Blue Hills Bank Charitable Foundation to the CPS gift account for new project-based learning program.
Motion, approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A gift donation of nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents from Egan Maritime Institute to CPS gift account.
Accusing for this.
Motion, approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A gift donation of three hundred and ninety-nine dollars from Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention to the CPS gift account.
Motion, approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen meeting minutes. Any questions or...
Motion, approval?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
There's no...
There are no transfers, but there are, we would ask you to take action on the invoices.
I didn't see those.
There's no transfers, but they asked for invoices, and I don't have it.
These are the invoices that we sign, aren't they? That we send, weren't?
Yeah. I mean, they weren't...
It just says there were no transfers.
Right, right, but that's, you still have to approve that.
We just have to approve it.
Oh, okay.
I see payroll.
I see.
That's the top line, and then...
All right.
So we're just approving that.
You can have this. May I have a motion to approve the invoices?
Motion, approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
Yes, I'm not going to do the enrollment at this point. It's really no different than what we closed at, but it will be a figure that is a moving target throughout the summer. We'll give you an idea in August what it looks like. Right now, it changes, it goes up and down even in the course of a day, as some students enroll and others are, you know, we get something from another school that they've moved to. So really, not much to report on that. I, I don't have it listed, but I will tell you the obvious, that a lot is going on with the building project. If you've been over to the parking area in front of the central office, you'll see that it's made great strides. The backstops are going up, and the, both the middle school and the new intermediate school are progressing quickly. It's going to be really close on the middle school, I'll tell you. I'm a little nervous, we got another, we got a delay on the windows... We got another, we got a delay on the windows last week, so I'm a little anxious about that. The intermediate school is ahead of schedule at this point, and so things are moving. We are hoping to have the, the new entry to the elementary school and intermediate school complex done, and the other parking done this summer. And so that's moving quickly as well. You'll start to see work, have already seen work in terms of clearing that. So there are inconveniences to us all at the middle school and, and the elementary school site, and we'll just work around it and hope to get there by September.
Thank you.
So the horizon, we're in pretty good shape. We have talked about the 25th for a work session with some topics. Just want to remind you, that's sort of a work session retreat, and we'll talk about some things, no action will be taken. And the next regular meeting of the school committee will be on August 2nd. We hope to have the advanced placement results by then, and as well as school handbooks and strategic plan update. And I will have the superintendent's goals and probably a first draft of the district goals for you to look at at that meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question going on about the building? Is summer school, any interruptions with summer school or with camps with the building?
Yeah, yeah.
I would think it would be.
Do you need more? Do you need more? Do you want me to elaborate? What we have done is that we have moved all programs out of the middle school this summer. First of all, because of the work that's being done at the end, but also because, starting maybe as early as tomorrow, the work on the front vestibule will start. And so the, really, it's, it's Peter and, and Sarah and Kristen in there this summer. The middle school, summer school programs, or programs that affect middle school kids, are located in the high school. And so, as is the community school, has been moved with its programs into the high school. So we're gonna, we're going to make it work. It's a little different, but I, I don't think it's going to be a major shift. The elementary school is going to be inconvenient, because you won't be able to enter the elementary school from the front circle. All entrance will be from the backside, the field side, and that's going to be a pain in the neck. But it's all in the name of progress.
And do you have summer boost running again?
We have summer boost running.
Do you have numbers on that?
Thirty, 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 I guess. Okay, two classes, two classes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you anticipating the vestibule to be finished before the, or for the start of school?
It's going to be close.
Okay.
It's going to be close. I mean, everything, we, if you think about all the moving parts, it's pretty incredible. We have a, an administrative retreat starting tomorrow, and one of the topics that we will discuss is what if it isn't ready? That's on the agenda, and we will go to Plan B. We just haven't developed Plan B yet. So-
Can I ask a question on the work session? Is prom and student dress one subject, like student dress at prom or are they two different?
No, two, two different things that were, and I, I've just written down those things that were brought to my attention. So I don't think we're limited, because we can, that's the purpose of the work session.
Great. I just was curious.
Yep. And I haven't deter, we haven't determined the place on that just yet.
Is it just us for Sierra's purpose? Does she-
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it won't be Sierra.
You're off the hook for that.
Yeah. This was a bonus to have Sierra tonight.
I know.
I thought August would be the first meeting that we would have her, but-
Yeah, I wasn't babysitting so much.
Yeah. It's great.
Do you have anything you want to add or share tonight? All right. Feel free to chime in at any point if you have questions or comments. We love to hear from our student representatives.
Yeah, we encourage it.
Thank you. All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.